All right, it's six o'clock. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty or justice for all.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, I move that we approve tonight's agenda. Oh, except we have an addition to the agenda tonight. You didn't tell me about that to begin with. So, under discussion and action items, we are adding 7.02, the superintendent evaluation, if that is agreeable to the rest of the board.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have an agenda. On to item number three, the superintendent's report. Great. Go ahead.
Thank you, Board President Wielander, other board directors, family members, staff, and students. I will start off with this, we had an all-day session in which we were able to, with teacher leaders from each of the schools, as well as school leaders, come together for a day this past week. It's, we do this annually as part of our preparation for the next school year. So, what are lessons learned from this previous school year and getting ready for the next one, so that these school leadership teams, again, teacher leaders and school leaders can get together and divide out work plans on things like, what's your master's schedule look like? Is there any tweaks that you need to it? What's your staffing schedule, so you can coordinate and maximize all of our resources as best as possible in meeting all of our needs? They go through the data, so that they're like, okay, so let's identify students who need which level of support. So, we have interventions that we have at each of our school sites. Some of those are very contextual to the school, and obviously developmentally appropriate for them. And then, they put those plans together, and then get ready for the next, you know, ready, so that day one, you know, each year we innovate and do continuous improvement. A couple of the key areas was around specifically tightening down our interventions, so we know that we've been doing some things for a couple of years, which things, which interventions work for which student populations. And I think that's always a really key thing. Just because you have an intervention, doesn't mean it's going to work for every student group, right? We're talking about, you know, little human beings here, even sometimes those high schoolers. And, we want to make sure that, for them, that these interventions are the best fit for them. And so, then we look at the data, determine like, oh, this really works well when students are at this particular reading level, or they need additional assistance around attendance. This seems to work with this population when they are just truant in the morning, as opposed to something longer or more intensive around their ability to not show up. So, we do that, and then we also talk about specific move, we're really into case management. It's something that our high schools have been doing well, and so we're just trying to further enhance those, the work of case management. It's really about having adult really work as an advocate for a student, and they're also a conduit of information. So, it's just kind of like, some people would call it like a mentor or advisor, it's not quite that. We do do goal-setting formally with the students, in a way we call about the whole child. So, again, what's your physical goals? What are your school or academic goals, and what's your social goals? So, we keep on those things, and then we help the student, you know, get through, whether that's something specific to passing courses, sometimes it's around attendance, sometimes it's around friendships, right? And so, we try to work on that, just supporting our students. And so, a lot of excitement in the room, getting ready for the next year, and just want to thank all those administrators and most teacher leaders for coming last week, right here in Mountain View, in the library. I just, there were some questions regarding the elevators, both at OBJH and SHS. The one at SHS is fixed and moving, the one at OBJH was operational until March 24th of this year. It was broken last year, which is not uncommon for elevators, especially at older schools. We had a fix, and so there is a dispute with the vendor, a little bit around who's going to fix what, and what's the cost when it was supposed to be fixed last year. And then, we've been using it, and so, it stopped since then. So, we are working with the vendor to resolve that and get that elevator up and running for the next, the start of the, next school year. This evening, Clinton Sherman, Executive Director of Finance, will be going over, doing a budget update. I just wanted to preface with the notion that we've done a lot of learning from the past. So, since I've been here, there's some things that have been historically done that are making it really a challenge to operate a budget. One is restricted dollars, so again, those programmatic dollars, those state and federal dollars that are restricted to those intervention-type services and specific populations. Cash reserves, hard to have when you're using your restricted dollars as your general fund balance, which are, can't just pay like the power bill, for example, off of, so you want those cash reserves to not be restricted. Those are, those are things that I've said since I've been here, those are things that we continue to tackle. But, we have been taking decisive action right now, getting on that, trying to build out those cash reserves as best we can, but the first foremost is to pay down our vendors. And so, again, Clinton will go over some of the details around that. That decisive action plan will help get us to a general fund balance for next year. I think you'll see those details as we lay those out. Yes, it does pain me to have to do a reduction in force, it's not by choosing, but we are also mandated to have a balanced budget. Our expenses are outpacing the revenue that we do receive. And, I think some of the shock that will come to folks is just around that we just recently received information from the federal government and cuts in some of those programmatic services. So, the sands keep shifting, we keep planning, I need more time to plan ahead of time, we can't just take reductions midstream. It's really hard as a, within an $83 million budget, to do things when you have annual contracts, and things are just dropped on to districts. It's not unique to Shelton in that regard, other districts will face those things. But again, the unique thing to us is knowing that, learning from those past problems that we've had, especially around accounting, and your over-reliance on restricted dollars, taking decisive action now, and then also just around seizing on the future success that we want for our students. Our outcomes are good, I look forward to finalizing those and OSPI putting those out. I think that's something that we shall be prideful, and something that I think our staff work really hard on, despite the current challenges around the economics of public education, that could, you know, continue to be spotted, not just here for Shelton, but also for other school districts, indeed. So, with that, thank you very much. Oh, also, in light of that budget, I will, I'm asking the board to not provide me with any raise, I don't, I don't want a raise in this particular environment. I think things are very tight for us, and that'll apply also for our executive team. So, that'll apply for Clinton and Tabitha. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number five, or item number four, public comments. As part of the regular school board meeting, the board welcomes community members to make public comment in person and/or by phone, as conditions allow. Please see the full script with call-in instructions and guidelines for community comments displayed on the screen above. First up will be Eliza Lummel.
Hi, I'm Eliza Lummel, and I'm here because recently, the librarian at my school got laid off due to budget cuts. Librarians are very useful tools. They can be used for reading books which stimulate your mind, add to your knowledge, or entertaining, and fuel your imagination. Librarians provide books to kids, but when you take away this tool, it makes it harder for kids to do all the things books do for us. For example, at OMS, after the librarian got laid off, my class hasn't gone to the library since. Personally, I always loved going to the library. It's how I discovered some of my favorite books. I think that all kids should have access to the library, but to give kids access to the library, we need librarians.
Thank you. Dave Lummel?
So, yeah, my name is, is Dave Lummel. That was my daughter, Eliza, and she kind of surprised me there. I only saw her remarks this morning. I'm aware that you guys have some budget issues, and that things are not always straightforward, but I know that my daughter in particular, every day after her librarian got riffed, she was extremely upset every day coming home, why can't we have a librarian? My teacher doesn't necessarily have time to do everything that a librarian does. And, just the fact of what Eliza said, hey, I didn't make it back to, to the library the rest of the year. Again, you guys have the things that you have to do, you have the, the balances that you have to, have to deal with, but I think it's a problem for our students when they don't have access to all of those things. And, I look forward to hearing what you're working on. I mean, things don't turn around in a day, but, yeah, we're all, we're all watching and wanting to see things, see things get better. So, thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Paula Kennedy?
Good evening, members of the Shelton School District School Board. I'm Paula Kennedy from Evergreen Elementary. I am here to express my concern regarding the validity of a petition that has been circulated concerning the dual-language program at Evergreen Elementary, and to address the inaccurate information being shared publicly about the program's current state and direction. During our recent family engagement event, a member of the multilingual Shelton groups stood at the entrance of Evergreen Elementary gathering signatures for a petition. Families were led to believe they were signing to enter the event. The false representation compromised the integrity of the event and misled members of our school community. When I asked them to stop, they entered the building, and a staff member later confirmed they continued petition-related discussions inside the school. Despite ongoing public reassurances that the dual-language program is not being reduced, there are persistent statements being made that suggest otherwise. These have appeared during board meetings and emails, on picket lines. When I asked what they are basing these statements on, the response was, dual-language included somewhat 500 students at Evergreen kindergarten through fifth, with two classes each at Olympic Middle School. I think this expanded dual-language program was still in place in 2019. This comparison, however, is not relevant to our current superintendent. In 2019, a reconfiguration occurred under Superintendent Apostol, and was followed shortly after by the closing of in-person schooling due to the pandemic. The changes that came during the return from the pandemic pandemic were nationwide. We have worked intentionally to build on our students' learning in both our English and dual-language programs, along with providing stronger multilingual support services. Our ELA scores on the SBA have improved dramatically, from only 9% of our students at Benchmark in fall of 2022, to a preliminary 23% at Benchmark in spring of 2025. We project the growth to reach 30% next year. This growth is not hypothetical, it's visible in our classrooms. I visited Miss Acosta's dual-language classroom, where Nyla invited me to her presentation in Spanish. It was absolutely beautiful. She has demonstrated growth in English, Spanish, and in confidence. This student success is happening across our campus due to the curriculum, instruction, and high expectations initiated by our current superintendent's leadership, the daily fidelity of instruction by our dedicated Evergreen staff, our students' hard work and determination to meet learning goals, and our families' support and engagement in their children's learning. I encourage all of us, as leaders and partners in this work, to focus on the truth and the data when discussing Evergreen Elementary. We are a school of tremendous growth, filled with staff and students who deserve to be recognized for the efforts and successes. Our programs are not being reduced, they are growing stronger every year. Thank you for your time, attention, and commitment to supporting factual, respectful, and student-centered conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Marilyn Aaron?
Never got to speak so close to you guys before. So, I stood here on May 13th and shared that, at that point, our district had already lost 100 staff members. Now, just over a month later, the numbers have grown. As of today, here are the updated totals for this school year. Eighty-three resignations, 25 retirements, 18 layoffs, three terminations, seven non-renewals. That's 136 staff members gone. Let's let that sink in for a moment. At the June 10th board meeting, we listened to two and a half hours of courageous, raw, and honest public comment from staff. People who stood right here and described the toxic culture, fear, and dysfunction they have endured under the failed leadership of this man. And you, five here, sat last night for two hours and 42 minutes behind closed doors, reviewing his evaluation. I sincerely hope that time meant something, and that you truly listened to what those brave staff members risked their jobs and their reputations to say. Because here's what real accountability looks like. In February 2025, the USS Harry Truman was operating in the Suez Canal when it struck a civilian tanker at 11:45 PM local time. No one was injured, no serious damage was done. The captain of the Truman, who was off-duty and below deck at the time, was still relieved of command. Because in the US Navy, ultimate responsibility rests with leadership, always. That's what accountability looks like in a system where standards mean something. Now, compare that to the Shelton School District, where incompetence is rewarded, nepotism is normalized, and bullying is used as a leadership tool. Where leaders fail upward, and the people paying the price are our staff and students. The contrast couldn't be clearer. People don't leave jobs, they leave leadership, and they are leaving our school district in record numbers. The question is, will you do your job? Will you finally take action to hold this superintendent accountable? Not next year. Not after a failed levy. Now. Our community is watching, and we will remember who chose courage and who chose complicity.
Okay. Moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda? Oh, yeah, anyway, sorry. Okay, five reports and recognition. 5.01, report on Career Connected Learning. Gretchen. Melissa.
Good evening. Thanks so much for giving me this opportunity to give you some highlights of what's happened in the last year. Let's see. Okay, just a recap of what is career and technical education coined CTE, because we're fond of an acronym in, in education. So, CTE is really designed to prepare students for the future by equipping them with skills and knowledge that they need to succeed in both college or career. Hands-on learning and real-world applications help students see the direct connection between industry and education. Our district provides tailored learning based on our academy and pathway model, and labor-to-market demand here in Shelton and in our region. Great examples are the promotional video our students created for Pest Business Park, which allowed our students to practice and showcase their entertainment productions, project management, and organizational skills, to gain a deeper understanding of business opportunities in Shelton, and create relationships with our industry partners. Students in CTE programs have the opportunity to earn college credit and industry-recognized credentials. They take place with internships or job shadows, and they explore in-demand careers. Our industry partners are adamant that our students have transferable skills, such as these listed here. During our advisory committee meeting this year, our engagement between our industry, education, and our students took place to outline ways to understand and align the compliance and needs during K-12 education, and what young adults need to enter university or careers. As well, we spent a lot of time aligning both education, what our expectations are for education, and what our young people need entering college or career. In order to identify and to meet the diverse needs and aptitudes of our students, as well as labor-market demand for the present and their future, we spent time this year aligning our courses to the national career clusters. So, you can see how we took our academy model on the left, and we tried to align it to the national career clusters that are aligned with CTE programming. This has helped us with our commitment to understand and nurture each student's unique story, strength, and need. This works well with our academies and our pathways, as well as all CTE courses in our seventh through 12th grade pathways. It allows us to tell our story, connect to the deep history in Shelton, and meet employer needs through transferable skills. Our CTE programs rely heavily on strong partnerships with local businesses, community organizations, and higher education institutions. For example, Olympic College, South Puget Sound Community College, the University of Washington, Central Washington University, Sierra Pacific, Mason County Public Health, Mason General, the Economic Development Council, the Chamber, and WIAA, all provided students with access to real-world experiences that gain their interest, develop their skills and aptitudes, and show them examples of what could be next. These partnerships also ensure that our programs remain relevant to workforce demands, and give our students the opportunity to build professional networks while still in junior high and in high school. Together, we created pathways that lead to meaningful careers, lifelong success, while embedding core academics like math, English, social studies, and science. Academics and credentials happen in a variety of ways, and two ways that we can help support that is through dual-credit, or college credit, and industry-recognized credentials. Through critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and community, or I'm sorry, and communication, which are all essential skills for us to navigate as adults and to model for our students. Through rigorous and intentional learning, we are creating our next learners. And increased opportunities for students provide different ways for them to learn and to reflect. You can see how much we've built our dual-credit and our industry-recognized credentials over the years, with intention. In 2022, industry-recognized credentials really took off in the state of Washington, and we grabbed hold of that and went with it. So, an industry-recognized credential can be anything from food handler's permit, to CPR certification, to FINUC robotics certification, which is really hard, and we've done that for multiple students in our district this year. It is important for me to say, though, that OSPI is changing the rule set for dual-credit or college credit, and as a district, we're still learning what that will mean for us. But my, I believe that we'll have a reduction in how many college courses we offer, because the fidelity of what we're offering as ninth and 10th graders will be changing based on the new rule set. Well, also, we've also received a lot of feedback from our community partners and our industry partners about the fidelity of industry-recognized credentials in the K-12 world, and the fact that they're forcing our students to take those tests again in order to receive those once they enter the workforce. So, we'll be looking at that to support our students with the learning that they need, that scaffolding that they need, but being mindful of what we're putting our students through as well. These are just a few of the things that we were able to tackle this year. So, we, everything from revamping the course catalog, to creating student and community feedback. We were able to build professional networks with our student groups. We had multiple guest speakers, hundreds of guest speakers within our district. We did mock interviews, college visits. We created a WIAA partnership, and that led to relational learning for our Health Science Academy students as well. We sent students through, to state through DECA. We're sending students to nationals with Skills USA, FFA, and FCC LA, and that's really something to be proud of for our students as well. These are just a few examples of some of the accomplishments that go along with the slide earlier. We revamped our academy posters, so you can see how we realigned what it looks and feels like to take those classes at each grade level, and the benefits that they have within that academy or pathway. We're running an on-air now broadcasting camp this summer, and we're extremely excited about that. That's in partnership with the WIAA, who gave us $35,000 worth of equipment to use at sporting and activities. Our students tried that equipment out at state basketball this year. They did a wonderful job, and this has led to alignment with University of Washington and their collegiate program through Student U, which is a broadcasting program at the collegiate level as well. We targeted students that were non-traditional inside of our classrooms by running classes such as women in welding and women in automotive. We realigned what our college and career fair looks like, so our career expo took on a workshop feel. We partnered a community member with a teacher inside the classroom and did workshops. So, what does it feel like to have a social media platform at ninth grade versus 12th grade? How do I utilize those? What does customer service feel like as a ninth grader versus as a 12th grader? How do I perform a mock interview as a 10th grader or as a 12th grader who's actually looking for employment? We had many, two, we had three advisory meetings this year, and we revamped what that looked like, and it created a lot more engagement with our industry partners, our educators, and our student body turned out in droves. And this is an example of how we realigned what the course catalog feels like. So, we aligned our courses, revamped how they were written, so that they were very student-centered, and spoke the same language all the way through. And this is an example of a program of study. So, what do I take as a freshman versus what do I take as a senior? How do I fill all my core academics, along with the CTE lens that we're teaching through? And this is an example of a leave-behind flyer for the 20-hour internship that we ran this year. We had a goal of 40 internships for the year, and we blew it out of the water by first trimester. Our students were going all through the community, and having 20-hour opportunities within our industry partners. It was so successful that we know how to do it and launch it right away in September, and we have a line already with our industry partners. From these relationships, though, we also were able to do really amazing things for individual students. We found transportation for a student who did an internship at Sierra Pacific that led to employment. We worked with the High Steel Restaurant, and the Climber Burger now is a culinary donation. So, every time you purchase the burger, it goes back into their culinary program. That was really important to the owners, and it was really important to our culinary program. Our automotive department took a auto that was unusable, fixed it up, and used it in partnership with Turning Point, and helped a community member with a need that they couldn't meet. We worked with OSPI this year as well to develop AI frameworks at the ninth and 10th grade level. We actually have been so successful that they asked We actually have been so successful that they asked us to develop seventh through 12th grade as well, and we just delivered the 11th grade framework this morning. That's been really exciting and really rewarding. It's an example of what we can do as a staff and what our students can do. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Fantastic job, all the way around, from internships to your CTE, community contacts. Good job. I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, and I hope anybody listening at home or sees us should be proud of what's happening in our school here. This is a really exceptional program. Well done to everybody who did all that work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I'm also blown away by just how much this has grown over the years and all of the opportunities. And having two students at the high school, it's just really exciting to me that there are this many opportunities for our kids. But I know that sometimes there's confusion in our community about what constitutes a CTE class. And I know that some people may not realize, too, that our state of Washington is giving more funds to, for CTE programs. So that may be why we're seeing growth of these programs and growth of these opportunities for our students. I don't know if you can speak anymore to anything about that?
Let me, let me see if I can hit the mark. So Shelton School District has done an amazing job of outlining CTE classes and creating these pathways in the academies. We've worked really hard over the last four years to reduce the amount of offerings so that we are not overtaking the CTE funding compared to basic education funding. We've, we've been working really hard to balance that out. I believe, I could be mistaken, but I believe we've taken over 30 CTE courses out of the course catalog in the last four years to realign them, to speak to the student, to speak to industry and labor market demand, both here in Shelton and as a region. And CTE classes do come with enhanced funding, but you have to make sure that those classes are full. So if I have a class that only has nine students, I'm still not capable of using my enhanced funding. I'm using that for payroll. But if I have a class of 25 students, I'm using that enhanced funding for things like calculators or equipment or big pieces of big supplies that you need, right? So in a welding room, I need more supplies and bigger equipment than I do in a math classroom. That doesn't mean that there's worth difference, but it is different. So as long as we're keeping up our enrollment, that is the math that does work.
Yeah, and that was part of my other question, too, because I know that just creating the schedule and going through all that coursework and paring it down to what our industry partners might want, what our kids are interested in, that's a, that's a big process and a lot of work. So thank you all for doing that. If a class is not hitting the mark for some reason, like you're saying, it's consistently not getting many students enrolling in it. It's just a handful, like you're saying, nine, then that is something that gets reviewed and then potentially taken off, even if people thought maybe that would be a good one? Or how does that, how quickly does that change get made?
Correct. It takes months for us to make it through the enrollment process. And Shelton does a really nice job of having student-centered enrollment. So when a student, when 25 students enroll in the welding four program, that's not a problem for us to run that class. When five students enroll and start your own business, that's a problem for us. And even though it's directly in line with our student store, it's still, we still have a problem running that. So we, as leaders, spend hours and hours and hours behind closed doors trying to run the numbers, trying to move students into an appropriate way. And we don't always run all the classes that we would like to because of that model, and especially when we're going through financial difficulty in districts. That's a practice that all districts use. We don't, we don't intentionally kill a course or take a course off of the schedule, but we do have to make prototypical model in CTE. And in Shelton, we haven't done a great job of that historically, and we're getting better because we really want those students to have a well-rounded education that hits all the marks with the core as well as the CTE. But we need to run a program that we can afford as well.
No, thank you, and thank you very much for all of your work on this. Honestly, just all of the internships that are provided for students. And I'm just, it was a great report. Really appreciate the work that you're all doing.
I only have a couple of things. You mentioned that on some of the, with some of the industry partners that even though they take a test in the class for accreditation or certification, that they're still having to go out and retest. How, or do you know, how are they doing on those retests when they get out in the field? Are we?
They're doing great. That's a great question. It's not about their ability or inability to take the test. It's about the fact that we spent money in K-12 for them to do that, and we're still spending money post-secondary for them to do that. And how do we marry the opportunity and the practice that students really need in order to be successful, but they're doing great?
Good. Awesome to hear. And if anybody hasn't had a High Climber Burger, I definitely recommend them. Get extra napkins. They're good. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just want to say I love what I get to do for a living, and this district has made it really possible for our students to fly and to gain practical and transferable skills. And it's a real privilege to stand before you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 5.02, the budget update for fiscal year '24, '25. Mr. Clinton, Chairman.
Good evening. Hard to follow CTE. The program is robust and incredibly impressive. It's roughly the same size as Olympia's, which is twice as big as we are. So it's just really an impressive program, and one of the reasons I chose to come here, actually. Okay, we're going to do a budget report, kind of an update on '24, '25, where we're at currently, where we see ourselves going, and what's coming up in the future. So I'll walk through some factors influencing school districts currently. Mostly, this won't be new. We've talked a lot about this over the last year. Then we're going to go into some financial practices that we've identified, and we've corrected what's been going on in the past, what we've partnered with OSPI and the ESD to identify. And then, like I said, what we're looking at moving forward in terms of the '25, '26 budget. All right, so we've walked through this probably a handful of times. I'm not sure if we used this specific slide, but we, we do have a problem with non-restricted dollars covering basic expenses. We do have a problem with the apportionment not keeping up with the cost of salaries or the cost of goods and materials in the, in the world. We all have kind of probably felt that at home as well, the cost rising. In comparison to how those other things are happening, what that means is that our local levy dollars, their capacity is shrinking, right? Because we get, we planned that out a handful of years ago. That's a static amount. We cannot go out for more just because of the value of your home goes up. And as I said before, those costs are just outpacing the revenues that come into the district. I wanted to do a quick thing about how important levy is to all school districts. Levis currently are a tricky thing with inflation and what people are willing to support. The levy in, in Shelton is roughly 10% of our budget. We get about $8 million for it, and then because we passed the levy, the state comes in what's called levy equalization dollars, and they give us an additional $2 million when you pass it. If you don't pass it, they don't give you anything, which has always felt backwards to me, that if you didn't pass it, you would need it, but that's not how they look at it. So this is a quick breakdown of how the, how a levy dollar is spent in the Shelton School District. So roughly 17% goes to facilities operations, that's utilities, insurance. We talked about that during legislative session updates, how they don't give us enough for utilities and insurance. Special education as well, that's subsidized by the levy. Athletics are fully funded by the, by the levy, all those activities as well. And then that basic education enhancements is, is, I mean, the enhancements is interesting words. We have to use how the new levy laws read. But that really is saying that the levy dollars stretch out and touch everything, classroom supplies, teacher salaries, benefits. I mean, I won't get in the weeds about SEB, but SEB is a new benefits program that came up, and that is subsidized by the levy as well because it doesn't generate enough money for the school districts, which is why they went to it, because it saved the state money. So that's a quick breakdown of how a levy dollar is spent across the Shelton School District. This is not, this is a pretty common split for other school districts. It's, it's roughly around this everywhere else as well. What's new for us going into this next year and this year are what's happening at the federal level. If you've been following what's going on, and I know a lot of people have, this may seem new to you, and it is. It's also new to us. There's some reductions coming. We were made aware a couple of weeks ago that in '26, '27, more reductions will be coming or proposed with, from the current administration. And we're a big ship. It's not really easy for us to turn quickly. I know we're a mid-sized school district, but we have locked-in contracts that we can't move on a lot of times. And so what we're looking at for moving into next year versus the year we're ending is about $1 million reduced in federal dollars. Title I currently looks like this. Some of that's still outstanding. Some cards may fall later, and that may change, but we're budgeting as conservatively as possible to be as fiscally responsible as possible. And so we're looking at $1 million with some title programs. Carl Perkins is a small reduction. And then in the following year, there's a long list of other title programs, safety school grants, at-risk youth, that are currently being proposed to receive a 70% cut. And that is drastic for our district. We receive a lot of federal funding normally, and so any of these reductions in dollars hurt. Yeah. So we've also updated some procedures because we, we ended this. When I first got here, we ended the year at a $2.3 million deficit. That triggered us looking at what's happening internally. And in partnering with the ESD, we've identified some longstanding deficiencies in the accounting practice. And then we realized, I can tell you, actually tell you, on my eighth day, I realized we needed to do an apportionment advance. If you remember, I, I came in and we borrowed money from our future revenue, essentially, and then we've been paying that back since. We'll have to do another one of those next year as well. And we started evaluating the full scope of the situation. And so then we began a process for calculating current-year reductions, which we unfortunately had to come in mid-year and do a reduction in force and, and make some shifts to our staffing levels because they're, were higher than we could keep up with. And that is just the fact of the matter, is that we are a people organization that'll come up really, that'll be made really clear in a future slide. And so the reductions really have to be in people, unfortunately. We received a letter of binding conditions in January. We expected that. Any district that ends the year with a negative fund balance automatically gets put in binding conditions. And that edict was to finish this year in a positive fund balance, which we pushed back on a little because we found out in January, and that's halfway through the year. And as we just talked about a second ago, we're kind of locked in for most of what we can do already for that year. So we made a bunch of cuts and tried to make some moves. We'll talk about in a second. And then we began training a new financial services department. They've been doing great. We started investigating and getting on the horn with all of our vendors to make sure we had actual understanding of the outstanding invoices that we had, that we were carrying as a district. And then we finalized reductions for this year in February. We brought that to the board and made additional plans for the following year. So that was a lot. I felt like I talked pretty quickly, so I apologize for that. What questions do you have so far?
You talked about accounting practices, and then you lumped in some outstanding invoices. How far back can we identify that things weren't being paid and why?
Sure. So the accounting deficiencies are, some are innocuous and small, and some are larger, like the invoice one, a quick, easy one. This is going to feel in the weeds, and I apologize. I, I do wear glasses on purpose. They're real. So our local receipts are supposed to go into a specific GL, and they were going into a different GL that they eventually moved to. It, it's not that huge a deal. It's just not what the accounting manual tells you to do. And so that's a smaller one. And there's a wide range of them, but the biggest one is that the ESD helped us identify is we weren't recognizing at the end of the year outstanding invoices as current-year liabilities. They were rolling them into as new liabilities for the, for the upcoming year. So not only were costs outpacing revenues, but then we weren't recognizing those costs until last year in that current year. Does that make sense? It's, it's okay if it doesn't. So let's say we owe the ESD or anybody, any vendor, $10,000. You're supposed to recognize that as a liability on your books as you close the year. We have a long practice of not doing that, of recognizing that as a new liability in the following year. And partner with the ESD, we recognize that had been happening for, for years, which, when they're $10,000, it's not a huge deal. But when costs are, are rising at such, at a rapid rate, and that isn't your practice, and then you all of a sudden do it, it forces you to have a $2.3 million fund balance, deficit. So long before COVID, a prior administration, we identified some, a handful of accounting practices that were just deficient.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would those be practices that we would at some point want to turn over to a forensic accountant or auditor to, to take a look at to make sure there was no mal or misfeasance?
Let's see. That's a great question. So forensic accounts are expensive, which isn't alone precluding their use. We don't currently have the cash flow to, to do that. But also, we haven't identified actual loss. It's just deficiency in accounting practice. So things that will show up on an audit finding or in your fund balance once you correct them. And so we've, we've gone through and started correcting these accounting practices, and we'll talk about that in a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that for me, just for having been on the school board for a previous administration, too, we had quite a bit more money in our general fund. There was just a lot. But I mean, there was, we had a buildup of quite a bit more. Things are not the same now, and so it seems like the margin's smaller, so.
Yes.
That's how some of these things are.
And that's true in every school district. When enrollment is growing, which Shelton had a long history of enrollment growth, revenue will outpace your expenditures. But when revenue dips down, it doesn't, it's not a parallel. Expenditures are still tracking up even when revenue's going down, right? It's, it actually has a weird inverse relationship. It takes time for the ship to turn to lower your expenditures when revenue comes down. So that is exactly right. So yeah, now things are a lot thinner. When you end in a deficit, you have to make really difficult decisions. And actually, the OSPI and our ESD have acknowledged just the decisive nature that the board and the superintendent and administration have done to correct this imbalance of our finances, right? It's, not all districts are, are doing it. I mean, there's, I'm not going to name other districts, but there are other districts that were named to us that aren't doing this to correct it as strategically and effectively as, as possible. So, yeah. Any other questions? I've got probably, I don't know, 10 more slides probably? We can keep them going. All right. So what we did moving into next year is that we did reduce staffing levels. We reduced staffing costs by approximately $5 million across the spectrum with certificated and classified staff. We reduced building staff by 7% and central office staff by about 32%. Now, I don't want to make a false correlation that we reduced more district office staffing in numbers. We, we didn't. But the percentage was greater, if that makes sense, because the district office is, is staffed at a lower level. The other things that we've done, and we will continue to do, and we've talked about quite a bit, is we reduced school department budgets. We froze classified substitutes. We were, we are helping with coverage from other buildings when there's an outage. Our accounts payable person has covered secretary subs a couple of times this year. We will continue to go and do that next year. We offered furloughs to central staff, support staff, principals, administrators, the superintendent. We've all taken furlough days. We'll do that again next year. And the big thing is hiring is really an important job for any, for any system and industry, hiring well. And so when there's an, an opening now, we have to review that really strategically to see, do we have to fill this job or can we not? And so even though we have done some staffing cuts, we also need a second-grade teacher. And if, if not all certificates are, are the same, so that's why you've seen some hiring while we're still moving with these reductions because we still have needs based on what the student numbers are. Yeah. So what we're doing, what's coming up for us? So as we recognize the outstanding invoices in August, we'll do that calculations through November. We'll actually look like we'll end the year with a negative fund balance again, which we're working with OSPI and the ESD on. While that's occurring, we're also, I've brought a couple of surplus seen of items to the board. We've done some portables. Those are selling quickly. We have a buyer for the, the home that we talked about before. We are leveraging attrition, and we'll continue to do so. And just a side note, the, when you're having to leverage attrition, you are subject to the opportunity of attrition. So if nobody leaves, that, that lever. So if nobody leaves, that lever can't be pulled, right? You can't review anyone if there's no vacancies. Just FYI, I guess. We are prioritizing some, our local vendors and the ESD and our community colleges for running start services, because those are the priority. We really have tried to minimize the impact of students as much as possible through these reductions, which is, if you can imagine, really complicated. We are withholding next year a 2% of our revenue that's coming in, that's basic ed, those levy equalization dollars and levy, that's roughly $1.7 million that we'll get into during the budget workshop or study session. And the district oddly has some other assets that we're also exploring whether liquidating those makes sense, and we'll bring those to you as we have more information. So at the end of this year, we'll look like we'll end at a negative $2 million. And then at the end of next year, we look conservatively have a projected ending fund balance of $1.5 million. And I want to be really clear. We are budgeting conservatively in enrollment and in revenues just because there's a lot of unknowns and I don't have a great crystal ball. And so the best way to do that is to be conservative as possible. So this is a graphic representation. We've seen this before. The orange, the orange line is expenses. The revenue is how our revenue comes into us. And the line below that in green is our fund balance. You kind of see how it upticks at the end. That's when we're recognizing them in the system. And the reason it's not recognized now, which is again, a little bit in the weeds, is that's not how the accounting system works. You move them at the end of the year into a liability account. Right now, they're just holding to be paid. That's all that is. So that's a breakdown of what that looks like. I've talked a lot again. I'm going to ask if there's any more question, any additional questions so far. Great. Okay. This is where the conservative dollars looking to come into the district next year look like. We're roughly $84.5 million are coming in, and 55% of that comes in as basic ed dollars from the state. That is unrestricted basic ed dollars. What's interesting is that another quarter of our revenue comes in from the state as well, but those are restricted. Those are LAPT, transitional bilingual, other programs that are tied to specific interventions for students. Then again, the local levy is roughly 10% of our budget. That federal number has been reduced by $1 million from last year. We service a lot of non-high districts that surround us. So the other districts is for the high school services for those districts is about $2 million. And that little sliver of point two is facility rentals, any fines or fees, any sales of goods that we might have that are smaller. It's just a really sliver of amount, but I wanted to be transparent as possible. What our expenses will look like for next year after all those reductions is roughly 80.5 million. And this is the slide that I wanted to show you how people-oriented our industry is, right? We have 46% is in certificated salaries, 18% is in classified salaries, and then almost 20% is in benefits. So 85% of our system is people, which means there's not a lot of room for the non-people stuff to make these reductions. And in MSOCs, you know, insurance is over $1 million. Our utilities is $2 million. I mean, these are, these are big bucket items that we are looking to make some efficiencies in our utilities. And in all those MSOCs, we are looking to leverage those and make sure we're using our buy-in power responsibly. But the important note is that we are people industry, and that's the bulk of our expenses. So it's also where the bulk of the cuts need to come from. So this is the same dollar amount looked at in a different view. Most people like pie charts. Somehow my brain doesn't like a pie chart, so this is like a cake pan. I don't know what you want to call it, but just how my brain sees it. So hopefully it makes sense to you. These are by activity levels. So this includes all of those object codes, salaries, stuff, benefits. So teaching activities is teachers and extracurricular, and that is 56% of the budget. Teaching support is librarians, counselors, nurses, paraeducators. Other support is utilities, insurance, a wide swath of things. Central admin is also tricky. It's not just the central office staff. It is any supervision, so deans, operational supervision. Those are the big ones, actually. About $3 million of that is what's called Activity 21, which we'll get into during the work session. It's mostly operational supervision. It also has like the Wasipsy and Skyward. We pay 300 grand for that. That's included in that one. And then principal's office is everyone in the principal's office. Principals, secretaries, the copiers that are there, anything else is coded to Activity 23. Okay, so that is a really high-level view of where we're at now, what we're looking to see next year. Here's a graphic representation of what that will look like. We're going to use the same graph. I want to have some continuity in how we're viewing our data. And so here's a breakdown of those object codes, those big buckets, and where we project the ending fund balance to be. This is still early in our budget season. We've done a lot of work since January on this, but it'll be refined as we learn more from the federal government, as some other things shake out from the state level. We talked before how we lost that OSSI grant. We don't know what that looks like, if that's totally gone or they come back with a smidge of it. We want to account for all of those changes. So once we know, we'll update it and you'll know next. That was a lot of information. What questions do you have for me?
I'll jump in. I mean, honestly, when you're going through all of this, it is complex and it is a lot of information. And I think that, you know, as much as we try to simplify things down, and I really appreciate you going through all of that and your cake chart and all of that, it is very complex. And we're talking about restricted funds, restricted dollars. We're talking about the fact that this is a people-heavy business. And then the emotional aspect of that is that if we are in the situation that we're in, we have to let people go. And that's very complicated. I appreciate all of the reports. I appreciate the hard work that everybody in the school district is doing to give us actual, real numbers and to get to the bottom of where those land so that we can make better decisions. Everyone can make better informed decisions on how that is. I also really appreciate that you're prioritizing vendors, local vendors, because I do think, and it's something that's been really hard as a board member, we have a credibility issue and we need to be paying the people that have given us services. And the only way we're going to be able to rebuild, you know, public trust is to be prioritizing that and letting them know whether it's a payment plan or whatever it is that we have to do to get us back on track. So complex, because we're also looking at, as the superintendent said, shifting sands of state and federal dollars that we're not exactly sure where that's going to come in at. So I don't know if I really have, I'll have questions as this goes along. I just very much appreciate getting down to some real numbers to deal with. And there's always, I think that there will never be a lack of a need to help educate everyone in our school system and in our community of how these dollars are used and why some things can only be used for certain things and you can't just take something out of a pot and pay another thing. So I guess that's just, I appreciate the work that you're doing very much, and I appreciate the report.
Of course.
Yeah, similarly, I really appreciate the detail, and I know it can get a little deep and maybe start flying over heads, but I think we need that. That provides that transparency to say, why are we doing this? This isn't just arbitrary. And I appreciate you breaking down, here's where it comes from, here's where it goes, and really give that picture. And I think it's important, I appreciate you do that every single time, and I think it's important to keep doing that. And for those people that have deeper questions, I know that they've contacted you before and you answer those questions.
Yeah, I have an eight, 19-year history of talking to community members and board members about, it is a complicated document and process. And I'm happy to walk anyone through it if they have questions. Yeah, I think transparency is the key, and so I'm happy to do it.
And I appreciate that. And I just want to say, we're not hiding this process. We're being very out there. And if you want more details, if you're that person that wants more, I know you are available to ask those questions. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Of course.
Two super short questions, just to get us completely out of the weeds with us and the public and everybody else. We're paying all of our bills now, correct?
Yeah, I wanted to say that, yes. I have spoken to hundreds of our vendors in local and non-local. And when I walk through where we're at and what we're doing and what we're committed to, and it's actually really helpful to me because I didn't know what this vendor did for the school district. And then so I would go talk to that director or department head. What is people doing for us? How's that work for us? And so I've had some really open conversations with the vendors, and they've had a ton of empathy for us and have really been on our side, which has been really valuable to me. And another, I think, feather in Shelton's cap about how everyone's kind of in this together. And so yes, we have either payment bonds with everybody or, and we're getting caught up, for sure.
Okay. And then, can I jump in on that one?
Yeah.
So it is really embarrassing when we can't pay the bills. When I got here, when you have nothing but restricted dollars in your general fund, you can't use those dollars to pay some of those bills. Those are some of the first phone calls I got. And I can't go back and know how long. We do know this is preceding that practice of holding on to bills and not paying them because you didn't move that debt into the next fiscal year. So the sense of urgency of paying it obviously gets diminished when it's not even on the books. So it's something that I think is important for this community here that we, that is what we've had to dig in to find out what happened in the past so that we can turn around and own that. The unfortunate side, what also coupled with that is, and now we keep going over it, the expenses are outpacing the revenue, which made that situation worse. When you have that, the only monies that you had on the books was restricted dollars. So we don't have, we have, we had $4 million in liabilities. We're able to pull down 2 million of liabilities, as you can see in this presentation. But that's why taking swift action now to get there, because we still can't pay everybody right on time. And we won't be able to do that for a while. And that's the part of prioritizing who gets paid when. As the revenue comes in, and we still have to meet all of our general operating expenses. So I'm just trying to be really super transparent on that. I don't want, trying to explain some of these complexities, and I appreciate that, but is still not enough revenue to actually pay down all those things. And so that, why some of our bigger vendors, as we've noted, whether that's the PUD or the colleges or ESD, we have to make, because those bills keep coming in, the expenses are over a million. As you have debt with them and you have current ongoing expenses, the need is to get, we have payment plans with them, and so that we can pay down towards those. And that's a really unfortunate situation. I monitored the accounts payable I had for years, so that's what I pushed to him about some of the priorities that we have to do to operate, because there are times when we have a vendor that does need to pay at the same time of making payroll, because the apportionment's really low that month. And I think the public doesn't understand, the state does not pay us the same amount every month. So when it's low and payroll's there, payroll just takes everything.
Yeah. And this month in June, there's an apportionment delay for a portion of it as well. So we won't receive that revenue until July, which is already a high month anyway. So it's not super helpful for them to do that. That is a mechanism of legislative action and them having to balance their year. But that stuff happens all the time outside of our control. Now we're going to get less revenue than we initially forecasted, you know, three months ago. So.
And I guess the last kind of basic question is, with everything going on, the plans that you have, it all makes sense, but just to verify, there is a light at the end of the tunnel?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a fan of a plan, and we have a rock-solid plan. We've been moving through that plan. It's been difficult and heart-wrenching. I mean, I don't enjoy spending a day having to call 50 vendors about how we're behind in their payments. That doesn't feel good, probably personally, I would imagine, and it doesn't feel good at work either. And so we are moving through a plan and it, yes, definitely. So what that looks like for next year is ending the year with a $1.5 million fund balance. And again, that's conservative. It could be higher than that. It probably should be higher than that based on what we're doing. But I want to have conservative revenue figures and higher expense figures to have a buffer to make sure we're okay. And then the year after that, we'll build that up fund balance up again. We can loosen our belts a little. And then once we get to the minimum fund balance that is board policy, then we can spend the $85 million that are coming in. Right now, we just can't do that. And then we'll get back to what would kind of be status quo. We'll have a healthy fund balance, and then we can spend the money coming in. And that's really the goal. I mean, because the real goal is to have the minimum fund balance policy and then spend today's money on today's kids. Whereas aren't able to do that right now because of these liabilities.
In the conversations with your other kind of financial big green guys, do you think that the cuts from the state and the Fed resources, you think we're pretty close on those? Do we not have any real clue?
We are all going off the same information, right? We get Title I allocations. Other things may come up. But right now, that proposed 70% cut is what we're all working off of right now. The other one that is, we talked about before, was how special education has shifted, how they're funded. We told you that last meeting. And so they lowered the threshold to like the state safety net. And last year, we received probably $600,000 of safety net. This year, that'll be $300,000 of safety net. And next year, it'll be like $150,000 of safety net. So we don't have that same trend of reduction in cost for sped, but those dollars are just going away because of the mechanism of legislative action and what's happened at the federal level. So we're as crystal ball and accurate as we can be based on the information we have, right? We all are, I think this year, you'll see across the state, much more conservative budgets than in previous years, for sure. Yes, ma'am?
Move us backwards, because my question is back to the levy dollar.
Yeah.
Can I get some examples of basic education enhancements? And what those look like? Maybe just some general examples of things that we really need this funding for.
Yeah, we've talked a handful of times of how we're on the average, we receive average salary dollars for each teacher, and that averages around $78,000. But the average teacher in Shelton costs over 90. So that difference is actually made up by the levy. And that's true for every staff member, that's basic ed funded. Principals, classified staff. Like IPD was 2.5% this year. That generated for our para staff $10,000, right? That's how much money actually came in as new money for them. But to give them all IPD is $100,000, because our needs are greater than what OSPI's formulas are driving into our district. So that difference is also in the basic education enhancement.
Yeah, and it's not just an enhancement for the salaries, but it's also as they proportionally, what the positions they fund. So security is like always a really good example. So the state funds, I think, about one security personnel for every 5,500 students. So we have more than one security personnel here. And so if that, you know, the levy backfills those other additional positions, that happens usually in nursing, for example. Sometimes counseling, definitely mental health. Mental health has nothing, they don't fund that. So some of those dollars are also support those positions as well.
Yeah, we do try to leverage the grant dollars that come in. Those categorical dollars that come in from the federal government, or if we go out and seek more grant dollars. But as I spoke about, we're giving $1 million production in federal dollars. So there's more, we can only spend this dollar one time. And what seems to be happening to us is we're forced to spend the same dollar multiple times, right?
I had another quick question, just because it's coming to mind as we're talking about prioritizing like the community colleges, the colleges, because we've got more students. I don't know if there's been an increase in students that are doing running start. And that's obviously not something that we can predict each year either, until you just know who's signed up to do that, right? And then they get the dollars for the student versus them being on our campus.
Yeah, it's really a flow-through. Those dollars come in from the state, and then we get an invoice from them and it flows to those colleges, yeah. And you're right, we don't know. We do try to forecast based on trends. I will say that the COVID closure really upended everyone's trend data. I mean, I could forecast enrollment pretty accurately before that, and I think it might be another three or four years before we can do it again super accurately. And so right now, we do try to forecast as accurately as we can what that running start number will be. But we don't know until the kids sign up for it.
Right. I'd be curious just to see how much that did grow, because I would imagine that, you know, once everyone went to virtual learning, I know many students do, you know, the online running start. And so then that is, there's more kids that are more comfortable doing that and taking advantage of it, which is great to get the college credit. But that is another dollar that is, that we have to factor out.
Yeah, that's right.
That is a huge loss, right? So that's around $18,000 per student, if you're already planning your budget on that. Two years ago was a big uptick in the number of students for running start. Two years ago was the, was a big uptick in the number of students for running start. We can bring back some numbers this party, even in that work session for us
Yeah.
to just have, let you know where, where exactly at.
Yeah. And, and I'm not saying that's a, it's a bad thing, we just have to account for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for
I wish my kids did it, actually.
So.
I really appreciate you bringing us something that's easy to read, see, understand. It's, thank you.
Sure. If you have questions, let me know. Happy to, happy to help, always happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to item number six, the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
I motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On to item number seven. Discussion and action items, 7.01 will be the proposed revised policy 3242, the closed campus. Chelsea, reading? This be the second reading, recommend approval.
Yes. Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Superintendent Jesse. As you just stated, this is a second reading for Board Policy 3242, closed campus. This is really just a revision or an update. It's a very short policy, and it's just to bring us closer to current practices and allow some flexibility for schools to have some autonomy and be able to put some things in place specifically for those high school 11th and 12th grade students.
It was a good short policy. I went on to look for page two and there wasn't one.
It wasn't there.
Does anybody have any questions about it? I would take a motion.
I motion to approve proposed revised policy number 3242, closed campus.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to 7.02, the superintendent's evaluation. Superintendent this year was evaluated on the following criteria, student outcomes, fiscal management, and communication. Well, we can't go into the entire evaluation here. You can do a public records request under RCW 42.56, and you can get a redacted version of that. Is there any discussion and do we want to move forward with anything? Is there any, is there any discussion and do we want to move forward with anything at this time?
I think that, because the, the RCW for this has changed this year, so if you're seeing some confusion on all of us as board members, in order to be transparent on that, in previous times, there really was no discussion, and it's still a personnel report and it is still confidential. We looked those things up as we're trying to manage exactly how we discuss an employee's evaluation in public. And so, yes, like Matt said, we were evaluating the criteria on that. We did, as we are perfectly capable of doing, having these discussions in executive session, because they are personal or personnel and confidential. And we spent quite a bit of time last night going through all of the aspects of, of this. So I think we have spelled that out and that will be given to Wyeth to take a look at. And also moving forward, I think that we will have a number of things that we're going to be jointly working on. I don't know if there's other discussion items or anything that you'd like to add?
No, except I think, again, I want to highlight, we can't just give that to the public. If you want it, what's that, RCW?
RCW 42.56.
You can request that and you can get a copy of that. I think we, we see an opportunity ahead, hearing from teachers, hearing from district for new collaboration. I guess that's what I'd say. I think I'm hopeful that we can see, yeah, a higher level of morale next year at this time, so. And, and in there, there's a lot to be said about what is going really well in this district. I'm one of the newer board members, I got to tour the schools, got to see the implementation of some of the new practices. Those are really good and they can be lost in the challenges. And so, so we've done our best. We spent a lot of time yesterday, we took it very, very seriously. Just because we can't tell you the details doesn't mean it wasn't taken seriously, so.
We heard what was being said. Our solution was that anonymous survey that only 25% of the people took, but since then, I've heard it's because they were afraid for retaliation for taking it. So that was our first step, and more to come. We did hear you.
Well, and also, I think a big component of this is what we've been talking about tonight with our budget update and seeing very clearly where we're at as a school district. You know, this is something that the board and the superintendent have to take ownership for, is the position where we're at. We're in binding conditions. We are in a financial situation that, that we all, that is difficult and that we all have to dig in and do the hard work to get out of. So I think that that is also a very large component of this as well. But there are a lot of wonderful things that are going on in our school district that our superintendent has been directly involved in guiding, and we do thank you very much for all of that. So at
Yeah. Do, do I hear a motion to accept the evaluation as written finally by James Dahl, based on all of our notes and conversations last night?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'm not going to repeat all that.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get that to you. The law's pretty unclear this year. They did rewrite a lot of it as far as what we can and can't do. We're still feeling all of that out, and our attorney actually didn't get back to us in time to answer a couple of key questions, so that's where we're at right now. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number eight, board comments. And we'll start on the end with Mr. Dale.
I don't think I have too many, except again, there are a lot of challenges facing this district. It's a unique position to be on the board and to work, and there are things you just can't communicate. And, and so I, I guess I would encourage people to, if you can, keep communicating, keep asking questions, but also don't always assume the worst. There is, there is work to be done, and there's a lot of work to be done, but there's so many great things happening in this school district and a lot of people working really hard. I think, I think the best is ahead.
There will be free food at Shelton High and Mountain View for, during the summer for kids 18 and under. So if you, you're in need or know anybody that's in need, please let them know.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here with us. Scores are up and gaps are closed through the aligned curriculum and I, but I want teachers to feel valued for their expertise, experience, and interests that they bring to the classroom. I hope in the upcoming school year, solutions can be found to encourage feedback as part of continuous improvement, as teachers become the experts of navigating both the requirements of the lesson plan and classroom management. It is my hope that the continued collaborative efforts of aligning classroom expectations and removing inappropriate cell phone use from the classroom will continue to foster a safe and welcoming environment. I appreciate the voices that came out to speak last week, especially the union, coming out and providing their collective voice on behalf of the teachers. I'd like to encourage staff to participate in any surveys sent on behalf of the school board to make sure we can address the needs of our staff and promote a collaborative work environment for a positive learning community. Thank you.
Director Davidson?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming to the meeting tonight, and I really appreciate your daughter getting up and being the very first public comment. And, and that, I feel like, comes to the heart of some of what we are dealing in our school district right now, because the reality is, I want that little girl to have all of the opportunities that, that we've been able to give. And, you know, that's where I know that we're going to have to find a way, and I know we've got wonderful people working for the school district that are going to try to find a way to give those library experiences and not have that go away. It, it truly is a heavy burden to feel the people part of this business, because you don't get a chance to just cut off something that, that doesn't affect somebody's life. And it not only affects the employee, but it affects the students that feel that impact. And the last board meeting was, was a turning point for me and, you know, for me personally, to really know and to realize, I am going to be here for at least two more years, that I don't, I'm not up for election. And I want to dig deep and get, and do the hard work and listen and have the hard conversations. And I, we have a wonderful community. I've lived here, I went to high school here, went to Mountain View Elementary myself. You know, we have a wonderful community that finds ways to come together, and I think we have to remember what our common goal is, and it's those students and it's the opportunities that we can provide. And we need to come to this with a mindset of wanting to work together, even if you don't like me as a board member, or you don't like somebody in the school district, let's find a way to have that conversation, to get through the barrier, to, to do what the common goal is, which is to provide these, these opportunities for our students, for all of our students. And I've done a lot of really hard thinking since that last meeting, and that, that really has been important to me. I also do very much want to say that it's difficult when people stand up or online, go through personal attacks, or they're very disrespectful. We are still human beings and we have feelings too, and our children see these things, and our community's children see our behavior. And I think we can all do better with that and, and just to have, we can have respectful, difficult conversations, and, and I think we can all work on this to have this all get better. And I guess that's what I want to leave it with tonight.
First of all, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I, I watched the, the video of it and it was, it was very difficult. I saw a lot of things that, that really bothered me in there, and I, I kind of want to remind everybody that I, I know, you know, the, you hear, you know, replace the board or replace superintendent, replace whatever, but one of the things that, that people fail to realize is, A, we're up here for free, but currently, two out of the three positions that are up for election are running unopposed. So for all of the arguing and, and being upset that we're not doing the job you want, nobody ran against us. And so if you want that voice, you're going to need to step up. It's an elected position. We're, you know, and, and it is, it is an unpaid position. Some of the things that came out, you know, about the budget and, and about placing blame and things like that, a couple of things that I really want to point out is, you know, the, the, I was able to make some phone calls to, to people around town and, because I live here and I know folks. We stopped paying bills as far as anybody can tell back in 2018, long before any of the people here were, were doing this. And the people here now figured it out and stopped it, and I have no idea how deep a hole we would be in if they didn't. So I understand the pain, but at the same time, the, the corrections have been made and we are moving forward. I, I heard a lot from teachers and I, I dug into student outcomes over time, and I, I get that everybody wants to have autonomy and do their own thing, but just like playing any sport or going into the weight room, those first couple of weeks hurt, and, and we make changes and we do things differently. Our school abilities and, and outcomes took a dive starting in 2014, that's as far back as I could go, and they dipped every year down to 2022, and they've gone up every year since then. That was a change in leadership in the district. And again, I, I feel bad that anybody feels bad, but I can tell you that the outcomes are, are kid centric. I can tell you that I care 100% for the kids in this district. When I showed up one day to drop my kid off, I ended up coaching football for five years. When we couldn't find a bus, I went and I took bus driver lessons and I got my CDL and, and worked towards that. When we didn't have a fifth grade camp guy, I, I didn't even have a kid in fifth grade, but they knew that they could call me. I mean, this is, this is all kid centric, and I feel bad that teachers don't feel like they can speak out, or they feel like they're hurt. I want to remind you that if you don't feel like you can speak out, you are protected by the Whistleblower Protection Act, and that's in the, the US Department of Labor and OSHA. There's also a WAC that covers it. It's actually RCW 42 also. I heard from people that were upset about children being abusive or, or hurting students. There's no place for that here, and I understand that, absolutely understand that, and any teacher that's been hurt, I can't apologize enough. And, and I, if it were up to me, and I know people don't hesitate to call me, I've had to pick my children up several times, take them home. I would love to be able to do that. However, we're bound by WAC 28A 600.20, or 020 through 6, or 460, 320, 211, 090. I mean, there, the list is long on the things that we have to deal with in, in attendance and, and discipline and all of those things. We need to work together on that. This does need to be collaborative. I, I also heard that, you know, it'd be nice if the, the school board could come into the classrooms and, and take a look around and see what's going on, but there's problems with that also. We, you know, we would have to get fingerprinted, there'd have to be policy change, there'd have to be things that went on, and the last time a, a school board member went out into the school, we got complaints about the school board member going out into the school. So, you know, I understand, but we all need to get on the same page, and, and that's been a continued problem. I want to hear from teachers individually, I want to hear from the union individually, I want to hear from the leaders individually. One of the things that needs to stop, and I'm sorry if we have made it so that you didn't feel like you could, but when you use a proxy to come up and talk to us and they give us half truths, technically corrects, or outright lies, it makes us very difficult to have any articulate decision or, or be able to take things seriously when they come from folks like that. Again, that was a, that was a rough, rough meeting to watch. I wish I would have been here. It, it killed me to see the way this board was treated, and I'm sorry to you guys that I missed it. I'm going to leave it there. With that, there's no executive session, so would I hear?
Lady with ESL, I forgot your name, I'm sorry. Paula, I have experienced being in the schools, I'm with the Lions and we do vision and hearing screening, and so the last three years, I've done it, and each year, I noticed an improvement in the children. And last year, they didn't need any interpreters to follow them through the procedure. So to me, that says, says it's working, and that was at all those schools, not just Evergreen, it was Bordeaux, all around. Previous years, many kids had to have interpreters follow them through the whole process, so I know something's working, so kudos.
I guess I'd like to add too, I do appreciate what Matt's saying. Matt's saying, some of the, some of the tenor wasn't maybe the best, but I am so thankful for every single teacher that got up there last week, and I would encourage our teachers to keep doing that. We can't know if you don't communicate, and I, I was just so thankful, that was a useful two and a half hours, so thank you very much.
Again, there's great things going on, we're, we're going uphill, things are, are looking better all the time, despite what some people might try to tell you. Again, motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're out of here at 7:30.